Good evening. My name is Chuck Iovin. I'll be presiding over this evening's joint hearing of the Malden Planning Board and the City Council Ordinance Committee, Wednesday, February 13, 2019. First thing I'm going to read is for those in attendance under the provisions of the open meeting law. Attendees are informed that this meeting is being recorded by MATV. I have not been informed by any other video or audio recording of this meeting will occur. So MATV will be video and audio recording the meeting, but they should be the only ones. The next thing we're going to do is we're going to identify ourselves for the transcription device. So if you could just announce your name and your organization. We'll start with Councilor Spatafora. Councilor-at-Large Craig Spatafora?
Pagrow Wood, one city councilor.
Councilor-at-Large Steve Winslow.
Ward Two Councilor Paul Condon.
Jim Chevelli, Planning Board.
Patrick Fitzgerald, Planning Board.
Diane Chuha, Planning Board.
Ken Antonucci, Planning Board.
Chuck Iovin, Planning Board.
Michelle Romero, City Planner.
Eric McCush, Planning Board.
Pat Hayes, Planning Board.
Eric Henry, Planning Board.
Henry Susi, Planning Board.
Toward Dejgabrisalasi, Planning Board.
Thank you very much. We have three council papers we're going to hear tonight. Two of them were tabled from last month's meeting. We will start with Council Paper Number 525 for the hotel zoning change, proposed zoning changes. Then we will move to Council Paper 470, which is developmental impact mitigation, and then the new one involving cohousing. So that's Council Paper 554. We will do it in that order. Right now, depending on what the status is, the only one that will probably go out to public input will be the one on cohousing, since we had most of the hearing at last month's meeting for the other two papers. Ken, could you read the notices for the papers, please?
Yes. The Malden Planning Board and the Malden City Council Ordinance Committee will jointly hold a public hearing in the auditorium of the first floor in the John and Christina Markey Malden Senior Community Center, 7 Washington Street, Malden, Mass., at 7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, February 13, 2019, tabled on January 9, 2019, to further amend the following sections of Chapter 12 of the Revised Ordinances of 1991 as amended of the City of Malden. One, Section 700.15, new, to establish regulations and requirements for development impact mitigation, City Council Paper 470 of 2018. Two, Section 400.1.4.6, existing, to amend dimensional controls for motel hotel, City Council Paper 525 of 2018. And three, Sections 300, 400, 500, and 800, new subsections, to establish use regulations, dimensional controls, parking requirements, and definition for new residential use category to be known as dwelling cohousing, City Council Paper 554 of 2018. Full text of the proposed amendments, City Council Papers 470 of 2018, 525 of 2018, and 554 of 2018 are on file with the City Planner, Permits, Inspections, and Planning, second floor and the City Clerk, first floor, 110 Pleasant Street, Malden, Mass.
Thank you very much, Ken. I'll pass it over to Councilor-at-Large Spatafora, because, as folks may recall, this was being sent back to committee for work, rework, and resubmital.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. I just want to, the ordinance committee is here with the exception of Mr. Kamel. Mr. Kamel had a prior engagement. He could not make it, so I just want to recognize the three members here. Paper Number 700-15, which is the impact mitigation fees, and also Paper Number 400-1-4-6, which is dimensional controls for hotels. As the chairman did mention, they were sent back to ordinance, I think about two months ago. I apologize in advance. I did speak to the chairman earlier. There has been no additional work done in this paper. I am a co-sponsor of both these papers, but the other sponsor, Council O'Malley, was supposed to take some of the recommendations made by this party and actually by myself, and none of that has been made. It was brought back up on the docket. I wasn't actually at the meeting when it was referred back or at least opened up again. So I apologize. I also know that there was some new information that was provided by the city solicitor that I received early to this meeting with regards to dimensional controls, that we definitely have to take a look at it and put in some measurements to base those mitigation fees on, and we knew that. I'm just saying this because I don't think we need to reopen these two papers and go through exactly what this committee, I mean, the ordinance committee and the planning board did an immense amount of work the last meeting and great recommendations, but unfortunately they were not put into these two papers, and I just don't want to take everybody's valuable time. I do know there's a new paper here that Council Winslow sponsored, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that I fully expect these to be sent back to ordinance so we can work on them and then send them back in a timely manner with the recommendations that were reflected in the last meeting. Thanks, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Michelle, could you update us on the hotel?
Yes, we did, as Council Spatafora said, the Planning Board and Council Ordinance Committee did open the joint public hearing in January on the amendment. We did receive public testimony. We tabled the public hearing. The hearing was tabled to allow the opportunity for sponsors of the amendment and ordinance committee to prepare revisions to the proposed amendment. I did provide that information in writing back to the council, and I do know that it was at least briefly discussed at the ordinance committee meeting. It was my understanding that this was going to be reopened, so that might have been part of my misunderstanding as well. I thought that was the direction given to place it back on the agenda tonight. In terms of the dimensional controls for hotel motel, we did have a recommendation, which we didn't get to at the close of the public hearing. There was some additional information, some of the ideas that were concerns that had been brought up had to do with the height and where we would allow it. I did just want to reference for the board's reference that in, and I didn't bring this up at the last hearing, that was my omission, in the central business zoning district allowed uses, non-residential allowed uses are exempt from certain dimensional controls. Hotel isn't allowed use. It's allowed by special permit. So under the special provisions for property in central business zoning district, the height may not exceed 55 feet in 12 stories. So there already is a higher height limit allowed for central business. In all the other districts, it is four stories. That's the height limit for hotels. So the proposal was to change it to 10 in all districts. So I did want to mention that for the board's reference. It's up to this board if you want to move forward with the recommendation or if you want to table the hearing, allow it to go back to ordinance, and then we will definitely not schedule it until new paper comes forward. It's certainly, you know, up to the board.
So basically, we sent it back for some more information on what we had discussed at last month's meeting. Nothing was done, so we find ourselves again at a point of seeing this paper. The one new piece of information we have is that there is already a flexibility and an option in central business. So that is good to know that as we approach voting this evening. Michelle, can you take us through the recommendation?
Yes. So the recommend, the amendment, as we heard, was to change the maximum height. It would change from 50 feet in four stories to 150 feet in 10 stories. That was the proposal. And again, there was going to be no proposed change to the use regulations for hotels and motels. Those are allowed by special permit in central business, highway business, industrial, one and two zoning districts. The special permit renting authority is the planning board. Parking requirements for hotels and motels is 1.2 spaces per unit, except in central business where there is no parking requirement. The effective date would be the date of the council's vote to add in the amendment. So if the hearing closes tonight, the date would be, excuse me. If the hearing closes tonight, the date for final action would be May 14, 2019. This board will be making an advisory recommendation to the city council. Your review and recommendation should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. The recommendation, which was prepared prior to the public hearing, was that the planning board recommended the city council disapproval of the amendment.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Any questions for Michelle? Okay. Is there a recommendation someone would like to make?
Motion.
To the ordinance committee? Diane Chuha?
I was actually back.
Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the information that the city planner provided regarding the flexibility in the central business district, I would make a motion to make a recommendation of disapproval based on the recommendation of staff.
Thank you. As Patrick's made a recommendation for disapproval, Ken?
I'll second.
Can second it?
And everybody except Henry Susi is voting. He wasn't here for the first public hearing.
Correct.
Okay. So this is a recommend, this, the vote, a yes vote would be to recommend disapproval. Ken Antonucci?
Yes.
Jim Chevelli?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Toward Dejgabrisalasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
No.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes.
So that is eight to one. You needed a majority vote to make the recommendation, so we'll make that advisory recommendation to the city council.
Very good.
For the planning board.
Next paper we're going to take up is paper, Council Paper, City Council Paper 470 regarding developmental impact mitigation. Council Spatafora has already mentioned that this too didn't really have any changes come out of committee. Here, let me, so no changes came out of committee, so we're looking again at the same paper that we were looking at a month ago. Jim Chevelli will be voting on this one also, just to, just to let people know. Henry Susi will not. Michelle, can you take us through where we are?
Yes. Again, we did open the public hearing, Planning Board and City Council Ordinance Committee opened the joint public hearing last month, and we received public testimony. You tabled the public hearing. The public hearing was tabled to allow the opportunity for the sponsors of the amendments and ordinance committee to provide clarification for the details and possible revisions of the proposed amendments. Specifically, the board requested more information regarding when the proposed regulations would apply, including whether triggered by remodeling of a certain amount or percentage of a dwelling unit, and whether applicable to mixed-use projects based on building footprint or gross floor area, and information regarding the fees and formulas used by other committees, excuse me, used by other communities. Also, the board is, was seeking a legal opinion from the city solicitor as to whether the proposed regulations may establish different fees for dwelling units used as rental apartments and units used as own-occupied condominiums. That recommendation that you made or that interim status was given to the city council. It was presented to the city council ordinance committee, and as I stated before, it was discussed briefly. It was my understanding that we were going to schedule to reopen this tonight, so that is what I did. As we heard, Council Spatafora say there's no new information at this time. However, I did receive a legal opinion from the city solicitor, which I have here, which I will read into the record. It's addressed to me, Council Spatafora, as ordinance chair and planning board chairman Chuck Iovin. It's from attorney, city solicitor Kate Fallon. It's regarding the review and explanation on proposed zoning legislation. It's dated today. It reads, "You requested review of the zoning amendment currently under consideration, City Council Paper 470 of 2018, and herein on my preliminary opinions. Please note, this is a preliminary informal review, not a formal opinion, given the time constraints and due to the additional clarification being sought by the planning board, which we will discuss further after your meeting. Please also note, this review only pertains to the present proposed legislation and is not a review or analysis of any enacted ordinances and should not be misconstrued for those purposes. Adoption of the amendment in its present form and as currently written is not recommended at this time for the reasons further explained herein." First, whether the development, question, whether the development mitigation fees proposed are permissible? Answer, "It is likely the proposed ordinance may be subject to challenge as written, specifically because there is no nexus tying payments to any measured, defined, or actual impact as further discussed. The proposed legislation does not appear to establish linkage fees which are intended to serve a very particular mitigation purpose." There's a footnote here to Somerville ordinance. I won't read the footnote. I'll just make that reference. "By statute, Malden is allowed to fix reasonable fees for licenses, permits, certificates, and services rendered, which the city council approves." There's a cite to Mass. General Law's Chapter 40, Section 22F. There's another footnote regarding that particular section of the law, which, again, I will not read, but it is here in this opinion. "It is my understanding that a 2006 utility infrastructure assessment prepared by Meridian Associates studying water sewer infrastructure formed the basis for the proposed legislation. However, it was detailed on considerations for such an impact ordinance and discussed water sewer infrastructure and traffic impacts." It reads that ordinance would require the developer to perform a detailed utility impact assessment. This assessment would document the capacity and condition of the existing municipal infrastructure in the specific vicinity of the proposed development. The assessment would also accurately describe the additional demand upon the utility systems generated by the project and identify measures necessary and sufficient to mitigate the impact caused by the added demand. The impact assessment would be subject to the direction or view of the city engineer or the parties deemed appropriate for the city. A development impact mitigation ordinance would assure that the impacts of development are identified, assessed, and mitigated, assuring developers bear a proportionate share of the cost of capital facilities needed to accommodate a proposed development." So that was the section out of that report. The opinion goes on to state, "As stated in the Meridian assessment, Massachusetts courts have upheld certain fees as permissible, such as water sewer connections as specifically noted in the report, but struck down others as impermissible taxes, noting generally that fees are in two categories: user fees, based on the rights of the entity as proprietor of the instrumentality used, and regulatory fees, such as licensing and inspection fees based on the police power to regulate particular business activities." There's a cite to Emerson College v. City of Boston, a case law, case from 1984. "A three-part analysis was established in Emerson College versus City of Boston, which is still governing law, to decide whether a fee is permissible, is a permissible fee or an unlawful tax. One, are the fees charged for a particular government service that benefits the payer and a man are not shared with everyone else? Two, are the fees paid by choice? Does the payer have the option of not using the government service and opting out? And three, are the fees collected to compensate the city for the expenses in providing the service and not to raise revenue? The Emerson Court struck down as unlawful a fee imposed upon high-rise buildings purportedly for augmented fire protection services because the payment was not tied to any specific additional different service being provided directly to fee payers that was not also being provided for the benefit of the population at large. In other words, the court found the benefits induced from the fees paid augmented fire protection were not special to the fee payers but were enjoyed by the general public. The legality of the fees, of fees depends upon their nature and purpose. Fees Massachusetts courts have upheld as permissible are entirely different fee payments and completely different structure than what is currently under consideration." There is cite to several different cases. "Reasonable fees tied to a specific service provided by the city are appropriate and acceptable and will likely withstand challenge." Again, there is a cite to the Meridian assessment and a reference to the impact ordinance for the City of Woburn. "In order to render this valid, nexus between the fee charged and the fee and the impact expected to be caused by development must be more definitive and be beneficial to the payer. Further, it appears likely that in order to implement the ordinance as currently written, the city would need special act legislation approved by the general court unless legislative modification to current zoning laws occurs." There's a reference to the Cape Cod Commission Act in a House bill that has had no action. "Finally, I note that mitigation covenants or voluntary offers are acceptable, such as those in our Roquory Reclamation Redevelopment Zoning District are acceptable, initially based upon voluntary contributions in the land reclamation agreement incorporated into subsequently enacted zoning." There's a cite to another case law. And then the second question, so that was a legal opinion on whether the proposed fees are permissible as written. The second question I had asked, or the question I'd asked was, "Are different fees based on type of use of a structure permissible, specifically different impact mitigation fees, depending on whether a structure is used as rental or own-occupied condominiums?" The answer provided is, "In my opinion, different fees based on different residential uses are not appropriate, and I find no legal support tying zoning to form of ownership. Fees in the proposed legislation are presumed to be exacted for the same services issuance of occupancy permit, so there would be no difference in the process for that issuance justifying the different fees. I look forward to further review of this matter with you pending the additional explanations obtained." And that was the opinion I received.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Michelle? Any questions for Michelle? Councilors, any questions? Okay. If no one has any questions for Michelle, is there a motion? Is there anyone who would like to make a motion?
And this would be for, to make a recommendation to the City Council Ordinance Committee about the proposed amendment, or it would be to further table this public hearing?
Okay. Council Spatafora?
While you're deliberating a motion, again, this was, this was a paper that I co-sponsored. Originally, I sponsored this paper over two years ago. I then tabled it because it's among other projects that were on the table within the city, and this would have affected them in an adverse way, and a couple of them were city projects that we're working on. Council O'Malley did ask to resurrect this paper several months ago, and I agreed to co-sponsor it. Again, I think it's a good idea. I still support it. I know there's a tremendous amount of work. I also see that, I want to thank Attorney Fallon for her legal opinion as well as her background on the rationale behind this. But I knew full well, leaving this committee last, last time, there was no calculated method that we decided whether in ordinance committee or not, in the hope was to have the building commissioner and then do some research from other communities to figure out a way to actually have this ability to charge a mitigation fee to other projects other than ones that we've already deemed to be, that we allow them to be charged on now. So I'm still in support of this paper. I know there's a tremendous amount of work. Hopefully, if it is sent back with a recommendation, either, you know, hopefully a recommendation to continue moving forward, we can, we can probably turn this around in a somewhat quick manner. There's a couple, the challenges, there's a little bit of roadblock right now with ordinance with a couple of the papers that are more timely, and we'll try to get them worked out, but they are papers with a lot of moving parts, and that's what we've been spending on the bulk of the last six weeks, unfortunately, and we have a backlog. But the hope is to get this paper out. If we don't, we'll have to re, I'll speak to Council O'Malley, but any recommendation by this committee would be appreciated. And again, I just apologize for bringing this back up without any work. I was on the, I skipped that ordinance meeting. I had a business meeting, and I was surprised to see it on the docket, so I want to make sure that, I apologize for this, the planning board's time on something that we went over numerous times the last meeting. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor. Michelle, can you speak to us about your recommendation?
Yes, the recommendation I originally made was made prior to the public hearing and made prior to receiving the opinion from the city solicitor. The standard of review, as I had mentioned in the last amendment, your review and recommendation of the zoning changes should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. The amendments are in accordance with, or at least in concept are in accordance with the recommendations of the Malden Master Plan of 2010 to adopt a development mitigation ordinance that is a recommendation in the master plan, recommendation P. 1.5, Chapter 6. "The amendments also fulfill purposes and intents of the Malden zoning ordinance in Section 100, including to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, and to preserve and increase amenities by the promulgation of regulations to fulfill these objectives. And also, the development impact mitigation ordinances were recommended in the 2006 Utility Infrastructure Assessment conducted pursuant to the moratorium on multifamily residential development of 2005." That's the assessment that the city solicitor referenced in her opinion. I did provide her with a copy of that assessment. So originally, the recommendation was, you know, to move this forward for you, the recommendation was that you recommend favorably to the city council with certain revisions. After, again, hearing the city solicitor's opinion, hearing from Council Spatafora, I do think this paper needs more work, and I would not recommend you recommend the council adopt the amendments as submitted. I think that needs further work. I'm not sure if it can be done under this current paper, so I'm not sure if you want to table this and, you know, to allow ordinance committee to do some more work on it. I would work on it with the city solicitor as well. Or if it's better just to disapprove as proposed, send that recommendation back. The council then can either, you know, not take action on it. The paper will expire. When everybody has more time to work on it, we can propose something else. That might maybe be the cleaner, easier one. I'm not sure if it's worth it to keep this paper alive as some sort of placeholder, given the, I think it might need a lot more work. I'm not sure if that would involve substantive changes. So it's, you know, I don't think it would be a mistake to go either way if you table it. You know, we just won't reconvene this public hearing until there's absolutely something back, another draft. That being said, I'm not sure if we would still need to re-advertise, so that's why I, you know, said maybe it's cleaner just to recommend disapproval as I, you know, said maybe it's cleaner just to recommend disapproval as proposed. You could add in your recommendation, um, you know, recommend disapproval, you could also recommend that the council work to develop a, a, a development impact mitigation ordinance, you know, so you can indicate that you're supportive of the idea, um, if not this particular proposed paper. That would be another option.
Any questions or anything, Ken?
Michelle, is there a time limit that the council would have to, uh, rework this existing paper? I mean, are they under any time constraint?
No.
If we table it?
The time constraint begins once the hearing closes. So if you close the hearing tonight and make a recommendation, then they would have to take final action by that, um...
But if we table...
The May date.
It's, it's open-ended.
It's left, it's left open-ended within reason. I mean, it can't be, you know, three years from now, um, because arguably, the public wouldn't have had notice. I would say it would have to be a reasonable timeframe, it would have to be taken off the table. Is, you know, what's reasonable, two months, three months, six months? I'm not sure. If it's substantively different, we may want to re-advertise anyway. Um, so, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but...
So, Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to table, send this back to council, to work with the city solicitor, to come up with the revisions necessary, uh, and resubmit when they're ready.
Okay, Ken's made a motion to recommend tabling. Is there, um, let's see, Eric McCush?
I'll second that motion.
Eric seconded it.
Okay, so a yes vote is to recommend to table, public hearing, um, to work with the city solicitor, um, table the public hearing, send back to ordinance committee to work with the city solicitor, resubmit when ready? What did you say?
Yes.
When ready, okay. Um, and that was Ken Antonucci, Eric McCush. Ken Antonucci?
Yes.
Jim Chevelli?
No.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
No.
Tawadigge Bresilasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
No.
Eric Henry?
No.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Chuck Ayovan?
No.
Okay, so that is four to five, so that motion failed. Is there...
Is there another recommendation or another motion? Hold on a second, Pat Hayes, let me clear out the queue. Pat Hayes?
I, I make a motion that we disapprove the amendment as written, and we ask, uh, ordinance committee to reconsider, redraft it, and come back with a, with a good one.
Okay, uh, Patrick Hayes?
Pat Hayes made the motion.
I'm sorry, Pat Hayes made it, Patrick Fitzgerald, I'm sorry.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. To disapprove, ask ordinance to re, uh, redraft and resubmit. Okay, a good one. Okay. Okay, Pat Hayes and Pat Fitzgerald. So this motion, a yes vote is to disapprove. Ken Antonucci?
Yes.
Jim Chevelli?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Tawadigge Bresilasi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Chuck Ayovan?
Yes.
So that motion passed, so we will make that recommendation to the city council. I will make it on behalf of the planning board.
Thank you very much, Michelle. You all set, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next paper we'll hear, it's Council, City Council Paper 554 on cohousing, and just so people know, Henry Sucey will be voting on this one and not Jim Chevelli. So at this point, we will, uh, turn it over to the sponsor of the paper. He could have, but he chose to stand.
Yeah, I'm just standing up to be more, a little formal here. Um, well, thanks, everybody, uh, planning board members. Um, as the lead co-sponsor of this paper, I support and encourage you to support the creation of a new use category for cohousing in resident zoning, just, resident office zoning districts. Many Maldonians yearn for the days when we knew and shared more with our neighbors. Cohousing developments seek to create both a physical and social environments that allow for group and individual interaction, creating sense of belonging that is so missed today. Cohousing developments must most frequently begin with a group of individuals seeking to create a collective to purchase and operate a property. Members of the collective own individual, individual units, concur, contribute to the upkeep, the common upkeep, and often give the whole collective the ability to purchase and resell units to help ensure new owners embrace the values of the collective. To increase opportunities for resident interaction, cohousing incorporates large common areas for group meals and gatherings, as well as nooks for informal meetups. That's an alternative to having maybe a larger living room. So this proposal decreases the density requirement, um, in, in response to that, so people can have, um, they'll, units would be smaller, but they'll be, there's a requirement to have , uh, common spaces. I've learned more about cohousing in the past few months since my paper was originally drafted. Based on what I've learned, I'm attached, I've attached, um, some suggested changes to the original paper to better define and distinguish this new use category. I propose increasing the minimum number of units from five to 10 to ensure a sufficient number of members can support a cohousing community. So since it's a community, um, you know, kind of the national standard is to have at least 10 or more units, um, so that you actually have a community and not just a small group of people. The initial ratio for gross square footage for common areas had been set arbitrarily high with a plan to gather more information. Based on research on cohousing developments in Jamaica Plain and Cambridge, I suggest, uh, that requirement be 20% of gross square footage instead of the 50% proposed. That is just, like I say, based on cohousing developments that are in, um, our communities. These are more urban, uh, settings for, um, cohousing developments, so that is some comparable architectural, um, comparisons, so, um, and like I say, the 50% number was, uh, put out there just as, as a placeholder as we did that research. The open space requirement has been adjusted for, from being based on percentage of the lot to a per-square-footage basis, which is more consistent with what other uses are. This, in this instance, um, the recommendation is, um, that it be 350, um, square feet per dwelling unit with 100 feet allowed to be sort of designed within the building for green terraces, so that's actually more than other, uh, for multi-use housing, so, um, you know, there's also, um, in this, my latest recommendations is to, um, create a tiering system, um, so that the first floor can have a greater lot coverage, but then, as the building goes up, that it tiers back from that initial, uh, coverage, so that's another, uh, recommendation. Um, you know, one of the things with cohousing is to create kind of a, um, a connection between, you know, units and the outdoors, so it's sort of like creating a, a little bit of a design of a, a, a green building. So, um, so there's a lot of interaction between the, um, indoors and outdoors, so, so those are some of my recommendations, but I think it's, you know, what I realized, um, in learning about, um, cohousing and, and looking at our zoning ordinances, that, you know, we have multifamily housing, we have, um, you know, group homes, and cohousing doesn't quite fit either model. Um, you know, multifamily housing has individual independent units where people go, you know, really designed for people to come and go as they please. Um, you know, on the other hand, sort of group homes are, you know, where there's total, you know, you have, you have individual rooms and group things. Cohousing's a little bit, it, it's, it falls somewhere in between those, so I thought that, um, you know, having this use, I mean, uh, is a way to really invite this new use into the community, and, you know, as we, um, you know, like I say, work to try to figure out how we can encourage more people, more homeownership, more social interaction in the developments that happen, I think this is a good, um, way to go forward and encourage this, um, kind of, you know, new type of use in Malden, and, and like I say, there's been, uh, efforts in Jamaica Plain, in Cambridge to allow this to happen, there's interest in our community as well, and, uh, this will allow that type of use to go forward. So I really encourage you to, um, you know, support this and, um, you know, adopt as per the recommendations I submitted, um, based on, uh, the latest information. Thank you.
Great. Uh, excuse me, Counsel, I just got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So to clarify, the reason why you're proposing this is for more social interaction?
That is...
That's the driver of creating this new category?
That, that is, like I say, you know, you have, you know, we have in our, in our u, in types of uses for sort of, you know, besides, you know, single occupancy homes or in that type of home, you have multifamily housing, which are, you know, units that are entirely autonomous, you know, they, they're in a one building, but, you know, you have your, a big living room, you have your kitchens and that type of thing. It's not really necessarily requiring any social interaction between the residents. And then you have the, on the other term, you kind of have group homes where people have, the, the residents there have their own room, but all the kitchen and living facilities are outside of their rooms. A cohousing is sort of a blend where you have, you know, the, the idea is you have a smaller apartment, but then you have a big common area, so you would have, here you would have a, um, like a, a, a c, common kitchen, and you would have a big dining room so that, you know, people in the development could get together for a big, uh, dinner, often, you know, weekly or more, more, more than a couple of times a week, so, you know, that's not something...
So there, there wouldn't be any kitchens in these units?
No, the, the, the units would still have kitchens, but there would also be a common kitchen and a common dining room.
I, I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering is, why can't someone come in and do exactly that under the multifamily housing?
I, I think it's, the, the challenge here is, is that, um, the, there's this trade-off, like, that, that in order to provide the space for the common areas and make those bigger and larger, um, you, you, the, you just have to then, you, you run up against the, the, the lot coverage and other type of things, so the, the density requirement, you, you can, you have the density requirement per unit, so what was, that here is, you're trading off some of the living space in the units to increase the space outside the units.
Right, right, and I get that, it's all how you carve, carve it up, and that's fine. But most of what I see here under the cohousings looking for more lenient dimensional controls rather than more stringent dimensional controls.
Like, like I say, there's more lenient on the individual units, there's more stringent on the common space, so that's the trade-off we're trying to create here and define that, so, so there's more, I mean, you don't typically have a dimensional control requirement on the common spaces. As long as those, you know, flows happen, there's no dimensional control on how much percentage of a building has to be common space. This creates a dimensional control, you can't be a cohousing unit unless you meet the dimensional control for the common spaces. So that's, and then there's the increased requirement for open space, because then you, not only do you have maybe a common space for indoor dining, you also have a, a bigger area for social events outdoors, so, so that's, your, your, people are, are trading off their individual space to have common space, so there's a place where they can have group things that happen, so, and it, you know, it talks about kind of two-dimensional controls for the common spaces that, you know, there's the 20% of the gross square footage, and then there's also saying that those common spaces have to be continuous enough that you can have an event that hosts the majority of the residents, you know, either indoor in a common room or, as well as outdoor in a, in a common, you know, patio or something like that, so, so there's some, you know, we're trying to, you know, create, you know, the building inspector was like, say, how do I decide, you know, how do I distinguish whether someone's trying to do a multifamily thing versus a cohousing, and those are the, some of the dimensional controls we put in to distinguish between a, a straight multifamily and a cohousing development. So that's, it's like, that's, we're creating some dimensional controls for the common space that don't exist in multifamily housing that would exist here, so that's, that's the trade-off. Like I say, and it's a trade-off of, people are willing to trade off their individual living space to have more group living space. And as I say, we, we, there's not, you know, it's not a group home, it's not the, people have individual units, but they, they want more common space, so that's the use we're trying to create, and it's, that's, we're trying to create that balance. So that's, that's the intent of why you would have a different use category. You know, we're, we're working to define that, so yeah, as best we can, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Condon?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I don't associate cohousing with a group home at all, to be quite honest with you. To me, this is just a condo building, they're all condos, um, and there'll be a, a common space. I hope that common space is reduced, because what I can see is creating like a function room atmosphere, and that's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it, to me, is to have a, a small area for the people to maybe get together, uh, in the building, within the building. There may be people that live in a, a cohousing, uh, building that may not want to, they might not even leave their apartment. They all have their kitchens, they all have their bats, they have a small condo unit, but, you know, I, I hope that, I think it's written it's 50%, isn't it? On the, uh, common space?
It's reduced to 20, I counsel.
Oh, on the, you want to reduce it to 20?
My proposal is to reduce it from 50 to 20.
That sounds a lot more reasonable, 'cause to me, I don't want to see, uh, the space rented out to people and creating, uh, uh, an overflow of parking. Uh, 20% is fine for what cohousing tries to accomplish, so, that's how I view this cohousing, and at first, I was a little skeptical, but after really looking into it and, uh, being involved with the building that wanted cohousing, uh, you know, it's very unique, you know?
Well, I, I envision it to be very similar to a college dorm or college apartments, i- is how I'm looking at it, to inspire that type of social gathering. I just don't, I, I can't get over why we, if, if you have a developer comes in and builds it that way, why we can't accomplish that under multifamily housing. Um, so that, that's, that's where I'm trying to get over, why we need a separate category to do that. Because we spent a lot of time trying to get rid of boarding houses, um, that, that rather, that had become a problem, and tried to clean up the zoning and, and the ordinances from that end. Uh, another concern I have is what happens when the first wave of people adopting this, you know, start to, uh, want to move on? It's not what they wanted, their circumstances have changed, and now we're trying to rent it into that second wave. What are we going to be left with, um, at that point in time? Everything's great as long as everyone believes in it, but once that starts changing and getting different takes and perspectives on what cohousing is and, and stuff like that, that's where some of my concerns are, but...
I know the particular unit that I was dealing with, I mean, they were, these are condos that are high-priced.
Yeah, no, no doubt.
And they have stringent rules, you know, protecting, uh, what's being built, you know, as far as parking overflows and...
But see, that's where I get, that if they built that under multifamily housing, and they are willing to pay the premium, they're not going to care that they have a 800-square-foot, uh, unit, because they're really buying into the social aspects associated with the community room. So, so I, I think that's just, that, that's why I just can't get there yet, so, but hopefully there'll be more testimony and we can go from there. Um, are you all set, Counselor? Counselor Condon? Councillor Condon?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay, Eric McCush?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. One, you have the line that says the whole collective has the ability to purchase and resell the units, ensuring that new owners embrace the values of the collective. It seems like that would be a good venue for discrimination. You've got a core group of four people, and they want to make sure person number five is just like them, so they're going to exclude seven, eight, and nine, because it doesn't fit their norms. I don't know if that's like, and I don't know how these really work. If it goes to, if the collective has the opportunity to buy it first, or if it's just going to, like another piece of real estate goes on the market.
I mean, this, you know, we, in discussing it with, you know, Michelle, you know, originally that was some of our thought to have that type of requirement in there. But we, you know, there was a feeling we could not put that in. I mean, if the collective makes that commitment, I mean, it's a, you know, group of people. So they, you know, they have that kind of decision. I, you know, I think in, maybe some people who are involved in this, but, you know, I think, you know, it is, they're trying to be open, you know, in that type of thing. So I, I can't speak to that specifically. But, you know, I can't speak to that specifically. But, you know, just as often, you know, co-op, you know, boards can have some control about people who join a co-op. I mean, it's, it is, there is this organization that's part of it, and there's some, you know, freedom of private associations. But how that applies, I can't say I know exactly of that, but, so, yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Are you all set, Eric?
I know, just one other question. Some to the effect of one shared motor vehicle for every 10 units? So is the collective going to buy a car for everyone to use?
I mean, I think that if they apply for that, that, I mean, like, this is also going through a special permit process. So that could be worked out at that time. If they are applying for that particular relief, then how that gets set up would be, you know, subject to the special permit. So that would be, you know, the collective would have to say whether they're purchasing it or, or doing, you know, or getting Zipcar to come in or some other means. So, so that would just be, I think, they ask for that during the special permitting process. I think that'd be something that would be handled through that. That'd be my thought on that, so.
Okay, thank you. You all set there?
I am.
Good. Patrick Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I certainly appreciate the intent behind this, but I question the ability to restrict this to condos or owner-occupied. What I see it as, people buying them up and then renting them out. What have you learned from Jamaica Plain and Cambridge that can be useful? And what specifically is the demand that you've encountered here in Malden?
Well, I mean, I think, you know, you know, these do, you know, the way the process works to create the kind of entity that actually buys the building helps bake in that. I mean, it, these are not being done by a private development, you know, you know, a, you know, corporation, and then being sold as individual units. These are individual people making it. So there's this whole process, and other people maybe know of, you know, you know, sort of, it's dating for cohousing. It's specific type of thing to make this commitment to live in a, a community where you're sacrificing some of your privacy in order to have more social interaction. It attracts a certain kind of people. Not everybody wants that. But there are, you know, the process to actually sign up for the units helps, you know, your self-identifying as someone who wants to live in this kind of community where you're going to have a lot of social interaction. So that process of just setting up the collective is how that is, helps ensure it goes forth, so, so.
Patrick, you all set?
Yeah, I just, do you have any information about Jamaica Plain and Cambridge and what they're, you said there, there's examples there? Are they in process or?
I mean, I think there may be some people who are in the audience who can maybe talk about how that is and how the, the one in Malden that's been proposed, their process to get it set up. I don't have specifics exactly. I do have some information generally how that process works. And I know that, I mean, there is sort of a group of people get organized and say, "We want to establish a cohousing place." They then, you know, form the entity that then goes out and looks for properties. And then, once a property's been identified, then they work through the process to have that established. But like I say, it's a different type of housing use. It isn't like the typical thing that we've seen where we have a big, you know, real estate development company or, you know, or a real estate trust to do something. It's more of a individual people who are investing their own money, and that's part of the process of setting it up, so, like I say.
Is that what was coming in at the Legion?
I mean, that, that is, that type of thing, that's a proposal. I mean, I've, I've written this with the intent that it be broader. I mean, we can't, you know, it has to apply in this whole zone. So, you know, I've consulted, you know, more general things than that. But, I mean, that is the type of development that's being proposed at the Legion Hall, so, so that is, you know, what is-
Okay, but I thought that was a developer doing that, not a cooperative of people?
No, I mean, it's, you know, it's not a developer, no. I mean, it's, it's a collection of people. I mean, I don't know exactly their legal organization, but it's not, you know, someone who owns 60 other buildings and doing it. It's a smaller group of people, so.
Okay.
I just, if I could just interject and make one comment. There is a note in the staff report about that particular property, 368 Pleasant Street. But I do just want to caution everybody that property is in litigation with the city. This particular zoning amendment, as the sponsor, the lead sponsor said, is proposed to apply to all property in the residential office zoning district. So that particular property's in litigation over a denial of a variance for a proposal at that project that was similar to this type of housing, that's my understanding. So this zoning is, you know, would apply to all the properties in residential office. You can certainly look at that as an example of what could potentially be built if this zoning were passed. But it's, there's no contract or contingency. We can't do any type of contract zoning. There's no connection between this zoning and that particular property. This zoning could be amended, and they may not build the proposal that they had discussed. And also, as I started, we just want to be careful referencing that particular project, because it is in ongoing litigation with the city.
Thank you, Michelle. And Patrick, you all set, Patrick Fitzgerald?
I am, thank you, Mr.
Ken Intenucci?
Yes, councillor, I appreciate your effort and understand, you know, what the intent is here. But I'm still, I'm having similar problems with the comi-
Chair.
Chair has, not commissioner. With understanding why this can't be done under the existing zoning. I know you've, you know, tried to explain it, but I still don't see a need for a wholly separate category here. And also, I'm confused as to the order of how this, a develop- you're saying it isn't a development. But I mean, something that's going to be a minimum of 10 units to maximum, I think you have 40. I guess I'm confused as to how you get a collective together before the property is developed versus having the property developed and then the collective come in. I just don't know how a collective of people that isn't involved in a develop- a development scheme can come in and create a, a, a building that's 10 units.
It's, I think it's, that's why it's very unique in that sense. I do have to say, I mean, you know, like I say, Chuck mentioned that, you know, like a dorm. In college, I lived in the biggest cooperative association in the country, student cooperative out in Berkeley. So that was all student-run dorms. And so, and it, but it was dorms. We had a central kitchen, and we had our individual rooms. I mean, this, you know, it's a great environment to live in, but like when you have a family and you want a little space. So this is, you know, so it's not, it's sort of like a dormitory for grown-ups, kind of like, as you say. And that, the difference is, you do want to have some more private space. You, you're not committed, like when I was in college, we literally cooked our meals every night. So you're not committing to cook your meals every night, but you're committing to have the space to allow a lot of communal living, but it's not, so it's, it's a different thing. Like I say, it's different than a group, group situation where, or a dorm where you have, you know, a centralized kitchen, you're having meals every night outside your room. It's different than individual apartments where you are really just kind of your own entity and having space. So the, the need that identified here and why I propose this is that, you know, this is, it is something different. It is something that, there are people who will, will willingly trade off their own space in individual units to have more common space. And that, I think it's just out of, it's, it's a different thing. And like I say, yeah, you can do it under multifamily housing, but then you're having to build a bigger building. And what's happening is that then it makes it financially very difficult, because all of a sudden, you're having to, you know, you're having a lot more space. You're, you're, the finances don't work as well, so, like I say.
But if you're only talking about a marginally larger common area, I mean, you're not talking about a function facility or kitchens or things like that. I mean, again, I just envision it being basically an apartment building with a larger, a large community room. Isn't that very similar to what you're talking about?
I guess I say, I mean, not necessarily from, but I guess, you know, there's been an attempt to have this kind of development meet our current zoning standard, and it didn't work. So I mean, I think that's kind of what, a little bit where we're at. You know, like I say, there, that is a little bit, it's, it didn't work, so.
But it didn't work, and again, we're not talking about a specific thing. We're talking about something that's going to be applicable to the business office zoning throughout the city, right? And whether, you know, residential office zones. Is the, I guess, changing questions is, is there that much, is there that much of a demand for this? I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I, maybe I'm just out of touch, but to have at least 10 individual groups, individuals or families or whatever that want to cohabitate? I mean, I guess I'm just wondering where this is coming from.
There, there is. I mean, like I say, it's, it's not the primary way people, but there's enough of an interest out there that, and like I say, it's hard because it doesn't fit in, you know, resident A zones. You can't do it in an industrial zone. So I think it's, it's hard to find the specific areas that you can do it. And then, you know, so I think that's the type of thing, there is a demand. I mean, certainly, and it is, it takes a unique set of things to develop that, you know, group of people who want to make this joint commitment. It does seem, thing, but there are people doing it. And it's, we have interest in Malden, and like I say, we, it is, I think, the thing is, you know, like I say, one of the things that interests me as a councillor, we, you know, our rental population here does not really get very much engaged in the community. And, I mean, I think we're already seeing that people with interest in cohousing are getting involved in a community. So it creates, like I say, it encourages people to locate in our community that are very committed to not only their housing but to the community. And I think that's good, and that's, like I say, that's the why. It's like, the why is, how do we make Malden, you know, a great community? And that's one of the things, I think cohousing can be a component. You know, it's, you know, we want to really create homes. People are saying this is how they want to live in their homes. I think that's something we should encourage. And like I say, it's, you know, the, that's what, why I, I'm here proponing it, is that ultimately, you know, what the role of the zoning board is to try to figure out some good rules for equality of life. And I think cohousing is, if we have it in Malden, it will enhance our quality of life, and that's why we should do it. And I'm just trying to figure out how best to do that. And multifamily zoning doesn't seem to be quite the fit that we need. And obviously, group home doesn't work either, so that's why.
So, so by basically defining a category of cohousing, you're hoping to almost use that as a category that we can advertise, hey, Malden's welcoming cohousing.
That, that's part of it. I mean, that would be, we would be a welcoming community.
And I know the chairman has, I know I'm kind of dominating the time here.
Well, not because of the people who are waiting to speak to us.
But you're, the chairman referenced like dormitories, but I mean, would something like an artist colony fall into this category?
That would be something that obviously would, would, could fall into that. That's the type of thing that could certainly fall into that. And like I say, creating that kind of stickier resident that is committed not only to their, you know, you know, collective, but to the greater community, I think that's good. And, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's, it's a great thing if we can have that happen and open up our door there. And, you know, we've had a lot of multifamily housing. And like I say, you know, I know as, when I run for office, a lot more, few, you know, there's not a lot of people who are renting in these multifamily buildings that are, that are voting. So I'd love to see developments that, you know, people are committed to the community rather than just sending a check to the landlord, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chairman.
And Ken, after the other people get a chance, feel free to weigh in again. Eric Henry?
Oh, yes, thanks, Chair. I just want to point of information, I guess. Are, this is being proposed to be done in the residence office zoning districts? Are all of these parcels in this, in this zoning district within 1,000 feet of rapid transit or train stations?
You're referring to the list that I provided? Could I interject to answer? So I've given you in the package of information attached to the staff report, a zoning map, which is the colored map. It shows you the four residential office zoning districts. I've also described them in the staff report. There's a section along Highland Ave, Pleasant Street, a section along Salem Street. Over now, the high school area, there's also the Daniel School along Eastern Ave, that area. And then there's a section along Wade Street Extension between Maplewood and Branch. I've given you the list of all the property in that district. That's what these 48 parcels are, that's all, follows the map. Each of these parcels, and I've given you the address, the lot size, and the current use, according to assessors' records. Each of these is located in the district. Not each of these parcels in the current state conforms to the proposed dimensional controls, so you need to be aware of that. There could be merger of the parcels to create a parcel big enough. But in terms of location, you'll have to either look at the map or, you know, use your judgment based on the address. I could try to help you. Off the top of my head, I would say no. Most of them are not within 1,000 feet of public transit or rapid transit. You have the two T-stations, Oak Grove and Malden Center. I think there's this, you know, finite number of parcels that fall within that 1,000 square feet. And you're referring to, part of this proposal allows for a reduction in the parking requirements if the property is located within 1,000 feet of a rapid transit or train station. There needs to be a certain finding made, you know, by the Special Apartment Renting Authority to allow that reduction. Keep in mind, there could also be a petition for a variance of that 1,000-foot number. If you're not within 1,000 feet, if you're within 1,200 feet, you might potentially ask for a variance of that number. So on their face, no, all these parcels aren't within 1,000 feet. Some definitely are, and some, you know, they all have the potential to ask, seek the variance of that number. The list was really just given as a reference, so you could see the variety of parcels in those districts.
Does that help your question, Eric?
It does. I was just trying also, maybe for the councillor. So how do you envision if a parcel is not with, meets the 1,000-foot with rapid transit or 500-foot with the Nordist Strand Community Trail, how you envision parking working for these?
Yeah, I mean, I think they, they have to meet the parking requirements, not without variance. You know, we, that may be by underground parking or by having a larger lot to accommodate the parking. I mean, one of the things cohousing does try to do is not be centered around a parking lot. So that's one of the things, you want to center your community of life around, you know, either a common room or a common open space. So the parking tent would tend to be outside the building or under the building rather than breaking up the common space, so. But they, you know, there's no intent here. There's, besides that, small relief if people are near the transit station or the trail. Otherwise, they would be meeting the parking requirements of, you know, one, one, you know, one, one parking space per, per bedroom kind of thing. So we're not looking for a variation of that as this, not looking for a variation in the height requirement. So, so parking and height requirements would be met by these. So, so, but it is giving some flexibility in terms of- So, um, so, but it is giving some flexibility in terms of, uh, building mass and, and a little bit of relief if you're near the, the, the train station or the trail to, you know, encourage, um, those areas and develop those areas. So like I say, to be, uh, you know, again, being welcoming and, and trying to create some different dynamics in some areas that could, could benefit from that. So.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Michelle.
Yep. And I'll, I'll just add quickly that I didn't know, there are several parcels on that list, do a but, the trail. I didn't pick up on that piece at all, but, um, or at least in my response, I didn't note that. All the Wade Street Extension parcels are but the trail. Um, there may be some of the, um, others that are within 500 feet. I'm not sure. And again, you could seek a variance of that 500 anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Is it Tuatage or Henry looking to speak? Tuatage?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. How do you guys determine the price of each unit? Do you have any plan like to make restriction or the developer is the only one who make like?
Like I say, I mean, there's nothing in the, the proposed ordinance that kind of limits that. I mean, I know if in fact, in the special permitting, permitting process, the development does commit to sort of the right of first refusal. I mean, that in and of itself helps, you know, you know, having that may lessen the value. I know there's, one of the other incentives here is to have affordability as, as one of the things. So, so there is some effort there. And obviously if they're, they did go through, through the special permitting process and committed to affordability, then there would be, you know, those provisions would ensure that, you know, however many units were designated as affordable would have to stay that. So, um, but overall, I mean, it, it is somewhat market driven, but you know, these will not be open, open for open sale if, 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 depending upon how the, um, the commitments are of the, of the collective. But a lot of cohousing collectives do require, um, unit owners to offer their unit to, um, you know, to, for sale. So they, there can be a process of, you know, making sure that people are committed to the values of the collective and, and being, um, you know, like I say, I lived in a student cooperative in, in college and there were sometimes a few people that they didn't want to do their, their dishes. So which sort of defeats the purpose of a, a cooperative living if, if no one wants to, you know, if someone wants to live there, but they don't want to do the dishes or cook the meals. So, um, so that is one of the things that people would have to, you know, kind of, you know, be committed to, you know, the rules and, and, and kind of living commitments of the collective. And that's, like I say, it would be, you know, that would be a limiting factor on value. But, um, you know, otherwise there's somewhat market rate. So, but like I say, we're trying to introduce a little bit of affordability requirement if people want that. I mean, right now we don't have any affordable requirements in our ordinances. This would be a, a first step of that. So.
Um, Tuatage, did you ask about size or price?
No, the price.
The price, yes. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Michelle, I thought you had asked about size.
I thought you said, how do you determine the size?
The, the units. Okay.
The price of each unit. The price.
Okay. Jim Chevelli, uh, Counselor Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just.
Okay.
You're in my way. Sorry. Actually, the, so I just had a couple of questions because I do, I do appreciate and kind of, you know, trying to conceptualize how this all works. But how is this different than like the micro apartments? I know another community was working on micro apartments. Are they, is it pretty much sort of the same kind of concept?
I, I mean, it's different in the sense, I mean, a micro apartment is an apartment. You sign a lease with the landlord. That's your relationship. You're not relating to every other tenant. I mean, the difference here is that your agreement isn't just with the landlord of the building. Your agreement was, is with everybody else in the building. So that's a difference. And then I, I don't know what, you know, in terms of micro apartments. Um, I mean, here there is, we're trying to create that, um, requirement to, you know, have the common space. I don't know, you know, in terms of, I haven't done the research of whether if you do micro apartments, do they have more space? But, um, I mean, that, like I say, it's, uh, it is different. You're making a commitment to everybody else in the building is the basic of it, the basic of it. So.
So, and I know that, um, actually, Ben, um, she just asked about, and, and I understand affordability and I do think we need to look at that. So, but if it's not someone that's developing and then people are coming to be a part of this development, but the people are coming together to sort of create this, how does affordability sort of come into play? Do you understand? So, you mean, if I, if the people on the ordinance committee, you pay a certain amount, you pay less, I pay more. And do you mean, I'm not sure how that, how the affordability fits into that?
Like I say, in the proposed ordinance, there's an incentive there that you, you get some relief, um, if you do affordable units. And then it would be up to the special permit granting authority to really kind of draw some of those parameters. I, I mean, I think I'm, I tie into the Community Preservation Act so that, you know, potentially if someone wants to do this, then they could reply for some CPA money to allow that unit to be affordable. And then it would be really at that time, you know, what the levels are. That's, that isn't, you know, that's like, you know, workforce housing. I mean, the, you know, the, for affordable housing, it's actually a pretty high number. Um, so, uh, so it's, it's not, you know, the lowest of low income numbers, but it would really be up to the collective, like I say, to, um, to, in the special permitting process to say what their commitment is. But it would be, you know, a fixed, you know, number of units that would have to remain affordable, you know, through resale when those things come up.
So if I was a, someone that wanted to get involved in a cohousing project, as a person, I could go to the CPA and say, help me pay for my, I mean, part of the cohous- do you have some, just sort of figuring out how a group of people can then come and develop and there's affordability? Or is it developed in some are designated affordability? So, I mean, they just.
So, I mean, I think, you know, it would be the type of thing. I mean, if, if, if you're looking at 10% of the units, I mean, the collective would have to try to come up with the capital, build the building. And, you know, in the special permitting process, there, there would be that commitment. Then they would have to figure out how to, you know, finance those, those number of units and that. So that, like I, it would be, I mean, just like any, you know, like the Bread of Life building or whatever, where you go out and find the public, you know, when there's affordable housing, you find out the sources of funding for that and you bait both of it into your, you know, your development plan or whatever. So they would, whether they do that just by increasing the, you know, obligation of everybody else, or whether they would apply for some grants to cover that, you know, amount, that would be really up to the collective of how they work it. But, I mean, if the special permitting authority would be the entity that would put that into the permit and make that a requirement and then, you know, have that enforceable or whatever. So.
Okay. Thank you.
We have other people.
Eric McCush.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a question more for Michelle, but, I think this came up once before. Isn't there a question of the legality of requiring a certain amount of affordable units in a building?
Well, we don't have inclusionary zoning. We don't have an affordable housing ordinance. So it's not required. If it's voluntarily offered, that's one thing. This proposal, as it's written, would be to require it. As the Counselor said, there's an incentive. Um, I'm sorry, it's not an incentive. It's part of the definition. A minimum of 10% of all dwelling units shall be set aside for community housing as defined by the CPA and/or universal access for persons with disabilities. There should be no variance. That's not affordable housing as, um, as the Counselor just said. It's a certain type of housing. It, it, I don't know if it meets the criteria for affordable housing as we consider it, uh, as you typically call it. But this is a requirement. So this particular use category would have that requirement. It can be, it can be done if it's in the zoning. We don't have it anywhere else in the zoning. That's what it is.
Yeah. I guess you're, you are pointing out, it is a requirement that if someone does cohousing, they would have to do that. So I apologize. It's not an incentive.
Yeah. I misread originally. It's, it's not an incentive tied to the parking, at least the way it's written right now. So it would be required.
Yes. So, yeah.
We can't impose it in a typical special permit where it's not being proposed or volunteered or agreed to. We can't require it.
Okay.
Because we don't have it in the ordinance. If this ordinance were to pass, it would be required so that you could require it.
Okay.
You'd, you'd have to require it.
You'd have to.
Okay. Outside, Eric?
I am. Thank you.
Kenny Tanucci.
All right. Picking up on that point, Eric, that was a great point. Um, can we put that requirement in a zoning ordinance though? I mean, is that something that the special coun-, you know, it's not special counsel, God. Uh, the city solicitor would have to weigh in on it. I mean, are we allowed to, not we, but you know, the city council allowed to put that kind of?
You can, you can have, yes, you can have affordable housing requirements in your zoning. This is a type of affordable housing requirement.
Without it becoming like a, tipping towards what you mentioned, the inclusionary housing or whatever.
Well, that is what, I mean, that's the same type of thing, right?
Right. But, but it's basically inclusionary housing limited to this, um, you know.
Particular use category. I see what your question is and we, that question should be proposed to the city solicitor. Um, I'm not sure about that. You're saying we're only, we're only requiring it for a certain type of housing.
Right. And if we're only going to require it for this, doesn't that open us up to say that it has to be either all or nothing?
Is that legal? Maybe, maybe a much.
I mean, you'd have to open it up for the entire city.
Yeah. We'd have to find that out. I would recommend that they, you know, if this moves forward, that, that we do get that opinion as to whether that is required. So I stand, you know, change my answer a little bit.
Counsel's metaphor.
Yeah. And, and I know there's a lot of other discussion about this paper and I think it's great dialogue. So I'm, I just want to repeat what Counselor Crowe asked to Steve, uh, Counsel, excuse me, Winslow, of the committee is if, and I know there was a project that was brought up here and I know it's in litigation, but in that example, I think it's the most relevant one that I had. Let's just say this, there's 20 individuals that get together and decide to build a building. Well, if the 20 individuals get together, how do you force them to have two affordability units if the 20 people, if they're only building 20 units? That's, that's what I think Counselor Crowe asked is, it's not like a developer's going to build something and then set aside two where the, the, and again, I'm, I'm naive in this process because it was only one development that, that I, that I spoke about, which was the one here. But that was a group of people that it was, it was already predetermined the number of units they had and they, I think they sold them all. So they were coming in with basically an entire plan and process in there. And I, and, and if it's going to be a developer coming in, it makes sense. But if it's a group of people coming together to build 20 units and they're all spoken for, do we tell two of those, those units, you, you, you have to sell them to somebody else for affordability? So I, I don't know how we work that in there. Um, if I'm thinking that, the way that Counselor Crowe was asking, we would just have a little bit of sidebar.
No, I, I think, you know, what it is, just in your plan to build a building, you have to have the funds to build those two extra units. And then maybe you've already lined up those affordable users at the time you do it, or maybe you do it after the building is built. And I, I think that's kind of what, you know, the proposal was out there. So that, that is, um, you know, that would be, they would, in their process of, of getting their, you know, special permit, that would have to be a commitment. And they would have to understand that that would be part of what they're committing to. Um, and whether those people are there at the time with a special permitting process or, you know, are identified after the, the special permitting has happened, that would just be, you know, a requirement. Otherwise those units couldn't be occupied. So, so they would have to, you know, figure that out. So, but, I mean, they would have a strong incentive to, to rent them out or, or, or sell them so that, because they get their money back. So, but it would just, they would have to figure that out. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Kenny Tanucci.
Sorry to keep having so many questions about this, but I, I guess, you know, it goes back to what Counselor Condon brought up too, is that, and I can't seem to reconcile everything that we're talking about because it seems like we're coming from two different directions on size, on price, on affordability. They're all going to be condos, right? I mean, that's the intent. This is all going to be condos, right?
Like, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I know, you know, on advice of, you know, Michelle Romero, we couldn't say they are. But like I say, the, the typical cohousing development that people are in, you know, purchasing, you know, their, their, their share or whatever.
But so, so it's going to be run by an association or you're calling it a collective, right?
Right.
And I know, reading ahead, I know, I think, uh, Nelson Miller had some questions about some of the terminology and association and everything.
I think we can work on that.
But I guess, you know, so, you know, I'm thinking of it as, you know, in this part of my mind right now, uh, it's, it's a condo association. And yeah, the association can have its own rules and, you know, and then everything that you have to follow. Um, what's, I, I, I guess, again, and I'm segueing into something, a, a different thought is, what's to keep the owner of the individual condo unless it's in the, um, um, association's bylaws from just renting out to somebody else?
So, yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, that is not part of the zoning that we can regulate. So it's really up to the, their, their agreement. And I, I know that's a concern of Nelson of getting to that level. But I could, you know, it is, uh, that is how, you know, you know, I could say I'm not at that level of knowing.
And again, I, I have the same, another similar concern that the chairman does that, you know, okay, that's great. It all starts out like this. But 10 years down the road, you know, is it going to become a, a dorm? You know, I mean, if the economy tanks or whatever, I mean, uh, we, it's all great to have this initially, but are we, are there some unintended consequences or, you know, negative effects that we're not thinking of right now?
I think at this point, I, I will, I know there's people who are interested in doing this. So I will, I think I will pass on that, answering that question because I can't speculate in terms of, like, I know, I know the student cooperative that in Berkeley, it's been over there 80, 90 years. Once you have an institution that's financially viable, things tend to work and they continue those values. Uh, in Berkeley, it's the most affordable way to go to school. So, uh, you know, you know, institutions that get set up like this, they, they, they succeed over a long time because the commitment of the individuals and the, you know, it's, if it's 30 people, it, it's not like, you know, it's only changing one at a time. So you have a slow change. It changes over the arc of time, but.
So I promise I won't ask another, I won't ask another question, but specifically the Berkeley cooperative that you were at.
Yeah.
Was that owned by an institution, a group of individuals? Was it owned by the school?
It was owned by the students who are the members of the cooperative. So it's a student owned cooperative. So it's totally, the, the board of directors is students. They have a general manager. You know, our individual house, I was the workshop manager. So I assigned all the kitchen and, you know, cleanup duties. So it was totally, our meals were all cooked and ordered by, so that's, that's a, that's, that was the college model. This is sort of a different model.
Okay. You graduate ultimately at some point in time. Do you sell your share to someone else? Or you just walk away?
No, I mean, it's, it's, that, I mean, that's, the student cooperative model is, you know, is that, you know, you, when you're a student, you, you know, you get points, but once you've graduated, you have to move on. You're not allowed to live there as a non-student. So you get some seniority, but once you're not going to the university anymore, you're not allowed.
But who owns, who owns the unit?
The University Students Cooperative Association is, it's a literally a, a cooperative in that sense, that it's a cooperative to keep housing affordable for students. So it's a little side.
We don't need to.
Like I say, that, this is, like I say, that's the kind of thing that happens. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So I will.
No one else? Any questions for the sponsor, paper sponsor? No? Okay. At this point, we'll open it up for anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this council paper. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of this council paper? When you come up, if you could make sure you speak into the microphone and then give us your name and residential address for the record.
Hi, I'm Paul Sherman, 284 Ferry Street. Uh, I'm involved with the group trying to build on Pleasant Street. So I wasn't planning on saying anything. I just want to clarify a couple of things about cohousing, which is just, um, the process takes several years. Somebody was asking how these people come together. Um, I would say that educated guesses, it normally takes like seven years between the time people start coming together and meeting to the time they get a building built, you know, they find a property, get a building built and move in. Um, the concerns about, I mean, and then most of these places have, there are about a dozen cohousing developments, communities in Massachusetts, about 180 nationally. Um, and as far as further down the line, uh, these groups generally have long waiting lists just because the, the difficulty in, in getting these things built, developing a community, um, you know, you can't, it's, you can't just pick up the paper and look at, and find, you know, a cohousing unit available. So it's, it's, it's a long process to get into one. If, if somebody just moves here now and, you know, they have to get on a waiting list. Um, so that's all. I, I just want to clarify a couple of things.
Okay. Is that it? Thank you, sir. Oh, okay. Counsel's metaphor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming on.
I'm speaking.
And, um, I will be very careful, you know, that project is in litigation, so I don't want to bring that up.
Right.
So, so my question is, um, when the units, if a unit becomes available, in your expertise, a unit becomes available, does, does, does the building have the ability to screen the applicant or potential buyer? So, let's say there's twenty units, one, one onus is I'm moving on, I want to move to another, I'm moving to another city. Uh, I want to sell my unit. Do they just put it on the market like a regular condo, or does the building, because it's cohousing, have some say in, in determining who moves in there?
Well, I mean, I think legally, the, the seller can do whatever they want.
Okay.
But depending on their level of, you know, commitment to the group.
Yep.
They would probably, um, I didn't, you know, they'd go to the waiting list, see if anybody else in the unit wants it, in, in the community wants it, or knows somebody who wants it. And I would say putting it on the open market is kind of a, like, you know, Plan D kind of thing. But it would, they would try to find somebody who has shown interest in being in cohousing and, and owning.
Yeah, the reason why I ask, is I know even there's some communities throughout the Commonwealth. My, my family at one point had a house down the Cape. They were all individual houses, but they belonged to a condo association. And you couldn't paint your house a certain color, you couldn't plant flowers a certain color. And, and if you were to sell it, this, this condo associate, even though the individual homes had the ability to screen the applicants, they could never deny them, but that was part of the bylaws that the community created. And when you bought into that development, you had to agree to all, like, you couldn't rent the house, you know, no, no short-term rentals. So, I didn't know if, if this type of bylaws or anything like that was, was part of this community. I apologize, I don't know. Because I think that's a lot of the questions is, what's the difference between this and a student housing, or what's this between, uh, I, when, you know, the first, when we started talking, it sounds like an, uh, I don't know what the correct term is, an LV building, right? Where you look at eighty-nine Pearl Street Assisted Living, where that you have a, a common area, everybody has their own apartments, but you try to bring, uh, people together to, to have common, uh, you know, interactions.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, I, I mean, I think as far as the, the selling scenario, um, you know, I, I don't know. Like I said, legally, I think the seller can do whatever they want.
Yeah, because it's condos.
I think they would always be encouraged to, uh, to get input from the rest of the community. But if they, for some reason, you know, didn't want to do that, they wouldn't have to.
They could do it themselves, okay. All right, I appreciate it. I just want some insight. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, Ken Intenucci.
Yeah, so, uh, to that vein there, so you could have an owner that decided to sell. And, um, you know, say without any malicious intent, uh, decides just to sell, put it on the open market. And you could have someone come in that really likes the location, wants to live there, likes the building, but has no intention of. Well, yeah, yeah, not me. Uh, I, I only got three left in the house, but, but that could just come in and, you know, you can't refuse me. I just want to live here and doesn't want anything to do with the, the, the association.
Yeah.
And you, you couldn't refuse, like the owner could not refuse it.
Theoretically, but I don't know, there's a good chance someone like that could also be scared off by what they might be moving into. I mean, it's not for everybody.
Well, no, I know, I know, but I, I don't know. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Patrick Fitzgerald. I don't know if Mr. Sherman was willing to answer any more questions or. I guess I'll ask you the question that I asked Counselor Winslow, being familiar with this. Are you familiar with what's going on in Jamaica Plain in Cambridge and, like, wait, like you said, there's waiting lists?
Yeah.
The turnover there, does it go to people on these waiting lists? Is there, how does it generally work?
I think so. I mean, one thing I know is that because it's such a, uh, an arduous process and because people, um, you know, have such a strong sense of community, this isn't the place, this isn't the sort of thing where, um, people move out after two years.
High turnover, right.
I mean, that, that certainly could happen. People's life circumstances change. But, um, you know, a lot of people move into cohousing with the intention that this is the last place they're ever going to live. A lot of aging in place.
How long are these waiting lists that you're aware of?
Uh, I don't know. I, I, it would just be a sort of guess.
But your, your sense is there's a significant demand for this?
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you.
Anyone else have a question for?
I'm asking as a proxy for a couple of questions.
So, one of the question was, one of the other counselors wanted, and he's shy apparently tonight. Is, do you see a lot of renters in this meeting? I buy the unit, I think it's great, but then I decide to move, but I'm going to rent it? Again, is there any, any way to, I know you can't stop because it's, it's a condo, but are they, I think it's getting back to the bylaws. What are the bylaws of these types of communities?
Well, like you said, I don't know if it can be technically prevented, and there's always circumstances where somebody
Yep.
gets transferred in their job for two years and they want to sublet for two years until they come back. But I don't know if the economics works. I mean, at least, you know, building a new building in greater Boston is not cheap.
Yep.
So, um, you know, the, when you develop it yourself, there's no developer taking a chunk off the top. But it's still, you know, whatever the building costs, and then you divide it up by whatever square footage is in each unit. But, um, I don't know if, uh.
Conducive to the living.
Yeah, and, and again, it's, would, would a renter want to come into this situation, into this sort of community? You know, it's, it's, some people wouldn't, just wouldn't want to.
Fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're all set? Anyone else? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone else to speak in favor? Yes, name and address for the record, and please speak into the microphone.
Uh, and a French, Five Monument Square, Charlestown. Um, I have submitted, um, a, a letter to be read into the record, so I will not take too much of your time. I know that, I believe that happens next. But what I wanted to come up, um, as a, as an architect with expertise in multifamily, in cohousing, in compact living, um, and in, uh, some community planning. And I just, I also wanted to answer one quick question, um, about something like if, how do you know it's not going to turn into a dormitory? Of course, the Massachusetts Building Code wouldn't allow that. It's a different use category, so this building would have to go through if it was, or if it had, if it just turned into a nursing home, any number of assisted living models. Those are all under different use categories by the Massachusetts State Building Code. So, that couldn't happen in this. These would, these would have to remain multifamily units. I just wanted to make sure that was, that was clear. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions as well, um, from the sort of building and architectural and planning side, but I don't have to. I can also go sit down.
Did you want to read your own letter? What did you, were you asking?
What, what would the planning board prefer? I'm happy either way.
Yeah, if you have a letter, please read the letter.
Okay, I shall do that. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, so. So, we wrote this to, um, City of Malden Planning Board, Chair Charles Ziovan, and Malden City Council Ordinance Committee Chair Craig Spatafora. Uh, as architects with expertise in multifamily housing, community building, community planning and cohousing, we would like to submit the following comments based on the draft ordinance to amend Chapter Twelve Revised Ordinances of nineteen ninety-one by adding Sections eight hundred point six point two point two four B. Uh, three, I won't read them all. I think we know, know what they are. I, I will spare you, um, to the, that the City of Malden is considering. With regard to the shared space requirement, we ask that the council consider defining of the percentage of shared spaces within the building to align with successful cohousing precedents locally and in other urban areas. Generally, the percentage of shared space can be characterized as fifteen to twenty-five percent of gross, gross area inclusive, inclusive of circulation space, but exclusive of garage parking. This recommendation is based on our understanding of both the larger practical guidelines for successful cohousing. Uh, there are several references we've given here. Christopher Scott Hansen's The Cohousing Handbook, McHammett and Durritt Creating Cohousing, uh, as well as a review of similar cohousing projects in metro Boston. Jamaica Plain Cohousing, which is at sixty-five Cornwall Street in, uh, Boston. It's our understanding that this project has thirty units and six thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight square feet of shared space. Assuming an average unit size of eight hundred and fifty square feet, the percentage of shared space relative to the gross floor, gross floor area is approximately twenty-one point five percent. I'll paraphrase for you. Uh, Cambridge Cohousing, um, it's our understanding that the project has forty-two units and seven thousand four hundred and fifty-five square feet. So, the gross floor area is approximately seventeen point two five percent of it is shared space. Based on this research, um, we hope that the council will consider amending the draft ordinance to read that the, um, the percentage of gross area that would be required for shared space be set at twenty percent. With regards to dimensional regulations, we ask that the council consider the following recommendations, each of which would help to create cohousing projects for Malden that promote community engagement, use smart growth strategies, maintain the character of Malden, and, and ensure sustainable strategies. For the rear setback requirement, we ask that the council consider maintaining the same rear setback as is required in the RO zone for multifamily up to three stories, which is twenty feet. Uh, the reasoning for this is that shared open spaces in cohousing are best utilized by the community and enjoyed visually by the neighborhood when they're adjacent to various interior shared spaces. Cohousing is often organized around a courtyard or pathways, and we give references as well, um, to Durritt and McHammett. If the rear setback is set at thirty feet, this would push much, push much of the shared space solely to the rear, disconnecting it from continuous interior shared space and risking that space would be underutilized. Uh, as, uh, for lot coverage, we ask that the council consider changing the lot coverage maximum to forty percent with a possible provision that this would be allowed if the coverage decreases on the second and third stories. This recommendation is based on two vital issues to cohousing. The first, that the increase in floor area must be accounted for in the building footprint because of the required shared spaces, a bulk, a bulk of which need to be on the first floor. These are shared dining, living and kitchen spaces with access to, to the entry. And there's another reference, uh, for a cohousing common house design book. The second issue deals with the qualitative value of fairly direct access to shared outdoor space from individual units, which is often a necessity in creating community on each floor of a cohousing building. That does distinguish this in many ways from, um, multifamily housing, of, which we do have a lot of, um, my firm has a lot of experience with. And, um, we can attest to the fact that multifamily housing in greater Boston is generally an autonomous sort of model where everyone lives in their apartment and really doesn't, usually doesn't even know their neighbor. So, this is a very different model that's being proposed. So, I will go to the last part. Because of that, um, the shared, the second issue, the qualitative value, is necessary to create community on each floor of the cohousing and is key to the quality of life for individuals as private outdoor decks, et cetera, are often not part of the cohousing equation. The lot coverage is directly tied to the necessity of outdoor spaces in upper floors because more floor, floor area must be distributed to the lower floors to allow for this. And finally, minimum usable open space, um, our requirement is actually very similar to Counselor Winslow's, um, to, our, our recommendation, excuse me, and our, we ask that you might consider three hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit, which would increase the existing requirement from two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty. This is already a value of cohousing that's very important, um, that shared open spaces, um, are throughout the building and throughout the, um, throughout the landscape. So, this requirement would acknowledge the increased quality of life that cohousing communities create through shared open spaces, which would be in line with the spirit of the usable open space requirement in Malden, while also acknowledging that these highly impactful usable open spaces in cohousing can be more compact or located throughout the building. Thank you for, um, listening. We're really excited about the prospects of these types of communities contributing to Malden. And again, as I said, um, much of our work has been in the greater Boston area, looking at these sort of, what are generally called alternative housing types that are in response to social isolation, generational isolation, um, issues of childcare and other community issues which all of our greater Boston neighborhoods are facing right now. So, thank you for.
Excuse me, how many, um, cohousing units that you've designed have actually been built?
Well, not cohousing because in Massachusetts, there are very few. This is the, this is the newest cohousing project. But we have designed, uh, the first all-micro building in Boston, it was a hundred and eighty compact units, which then influenced the new, um, zoning, the, uh, zoning for the BPDA has just put forward for requiring shared amenity spaces for compact living in Boston.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle?
I just had one question. The letter had, and you had referenced Jamaica Plain and, um, Cambridge.
Yep.
Average unit size is eight hundred and fifty square feet. Is that, um, do you know, is that required? Or it says this, you assume the average unit size. Is there a typical size for these units? Because I know the proposed ordinance says three bedrooms and eight hundred and fifty feet, square feet, sounds small for three bedrooms.
No, eight hundred and fifty square feet would be the average of all unit sizes, which is typical of a development. So, that would go from studio to three bedroom. And that number was a target that we consulted with Chris Scott Hansen, who is one of the sort of foremost, um, experts on cohousing in the country, that that would, that's the average unit size. But again, that would go from four fifty.
Okay, average unit, okay. Thank you.
Um, before you leave, Counselor Crow.
Actually, I didn't have a question. I actually wanted to see if we can get a copy of the letter because you made some other references to a handbook and some other things, just to, since we're learning all this, I thought that would be.
Yeah, I have the copy that was submitted. You can, yeah, do you want it?
Okay, Henry Soucy.
Do you want to read it now?
Sure.
Oh, oh, you want me to email it? Okay, yeah, sure.
In your remarks, uh, in your, the letter that you read, you didn't mention anything about an affordability component. Is it not part of the typical model to include ten percent affordability or anything like that?
So, you know, um, there are different models, of course. In Boston, under, there, there is a requirement for a, a percentage of affordable housing. So, in that case, for Jamaica Plain, I believe that that was, I believe, I can't state that exactly, that that was part of the city requirement. We didn't comment on it because it seems very much in keeping with the spirit of cohousing, that many of these communities try to make units that are affordable so that they, um, can live by the, the model that they, uh, have designed, which is to be an inclusive group that is multi-generational and, um, is, has a broad income base.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Is there anyone else who has a question for this young lady? Michelle, were you all set?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take young and I'll go. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this, uh, paper? Anyone else speak in favor? Michelle, do you have anything to read in favor?
No. I did, you know, I had received the letter dated February eleventh from the, the, um, Ms.
Right, Ms. French just read herself.
French, right, that she just read in, so that's the only letter that I had received, right.
Okay, cool. Okay, is there anyone else like to speak in favor? Seeing and hearing none, declare that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this council paper? Anyone to speak in opposition? Michelle, anything to read in opposition?
No.
Seeing and hearing none in opposition, declare that part of the hearing closed. Uh, Michelle, can you take us through your staff report?
Yes, um, before I do, I do want to reference, we did receive, um, some comments, um, not, you know, not in favor or, or in opposition from the Building Commissioner Nelson Miller, who is also here, if anybody has follow-up questions. This is, I had asked for his, uh, any comments that he might have on the proposed definition. He's the zoning enforcement officer, so he's the person in the city that will, you know, that is charged with interpreting it and enforcing it. The zoning ordinance, that is, so, um, I had asked for any comments. He provided comments in an email dated February eleventh, two thousand and nineteen. It reads, uh, please accept these comments with regard to the proposed definition of the use dwelling cohousing. The proposed definition is a possible conflict with our current zoning ordinance and also some vagaries which may lead to difficulty in providing fair and concise interpretation of the ordinance. One, the term cluster of buildings provides for multiple principal buildings on a single lot, which is not allowed by our current ordinances. Two, the term association is unclear as to a requirement for a formal or legalized association, such as a corporation or simply a group of people who associate together. Three, the definition states that, quote, resident members who desire shared spaces designed to allow high levels of social interaction, end quote. The interpretation of a group of people's desires, as well as what qualifies as high levels of social interaction, is subjective and unmeasurable. Four, does the requirement for shared spaces to be large enough to accommodate a majority of the residents mean all of the spaces added together or each individually? And five, how does the ten percent requirement for community housing or persons with disabilities translate for buildings with less than ten units, one unit in a building of five to ten units? Please do not hesitate to contact me with any questions or concerns, Nelson Miller, Building Commissioner, City of Malden. So, I did have that to read as well. So, um, as you heard, uh, we heard about the petition. The public hearing, just for the record, did open in January ninth, two thousand and. The public hearing, just for the record, did open in January 9th, 2019. We did not receive any public testimony. The hearing was immediately tabled at the request of the cosponsor, one of the cosponsors supported by the other two cosponsors. As you heard, the amendment proposes to establish a new residential use category to be known as dwelling cohousing. This use may be considered a multifamily dwelling under the current zoning ordinances. This amendment would establish a separate use category for this type of dwelling. It would preclude classification of this use as a type or kind of other residential or other use. So the proposed use regulations, I outlined them here, they, as you heard, they may have, the use may be allowed by special permit only in the residential office zoning district. Planning Board is a special permit granting authority. I've given you a comparison of how the new regulations compare with existing multifamily dwelling use regulations up to three stories. So you can see which districts they're allowed, prohibited, allowed by special permit. As I mentioned briefly before, there are currently four residential office zoning districts. I gave you the zoning map. They are in the dark green, the olive green. I know it's a small map, but those are the areas, the four districts. There are approximately 48 parcels located in those areas. As I mentioned before, you have Pleasant Street between the Malden MBTA, Malden Center Station and Highland Ave, portions of Salem Street between Park Street and Albion Street, the southeastern corner of Eastern Evan Daniel Street, and the southern side of Wade Street extension between Maplewood Street and Brand Street. As I said before, this list of parcels is really for your reference only, so you can see the locations and current use of the parcels. This is, again, not, it's really for illustration and reference, showing you where the zoning districts are and what parcels are included. It's not any indication of any, you know, interest in conversion for this particular use. It's not suggesting that all these parcels would be eligible for conversion for this particular use. I've given you the lot size, so you can kind of have some sense of which of these parcels might qualify without merger or subdivision under the proposed dimensional controls, which are provided also here. I've given you also the information as to how the proposed new dimensional controls for this new use category compared to existing dimensional controls for multifamily up to three stories. Differences are, as you can see, in front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback, usable open space, building coverage, actually isn't different, I misspoke, density and maximum height. There are some differences there. For illustration, the open space requirement as proposed in the paper was given as a percentage. So for illustration, a parcel with a lot area of 18,750 would require 5,625 square feet of open space under this proposed amendment. That size lot could support 18 dwelling units, so that calculates to between 300 and 350 square feet of open space per unit. As proposed, the amendment does not change current open space requirements that require the areas be used for active or passive recreational use, not be considered for off-street parking, vehicular access, or egress, the minimum dimensions for those spaces, and the requirement that the open space requirement may not be met by indoor recreational facilities, or that it be pervious, visible to the public, a minimum of 50 percent located in yard setback areas. So the proposal only looks at changing the minimum requirement, not any of these other requirements. In terms of parking and loading, we talked briefly about that. You heard from the sponsor, the requirement's one space per bedroom, which is what is required for multifamily dwellings in all other, for all other use categories as well for multifamily. There is also a provision in the proposed amendment for a formula for reduction. I've provided that here for you. I won't read that into the record, but it's here. You also have a copy of the paper, the proposal, that is, should be the last page of the package. In terms of the definition, the amendment proposes a definition, as we heard from the Building Commissioner's correspondence, the definition does contain provisions that are in conflict with the current ordinance, are unclear, vague, and/or unmeasurable. They may present interpretation and enforcement issues. In terms of application and exemptions, the amendment, if ordained, would apply to new construction and new use in occupancy of existing buildings unless exempt or grandfathered in by state law or local ordinance, the State Permit Extension Act, or the express language of the amendment. Applications for permits in the processing stage when first publication of the notice occurs, which was December 21st, 2018, are not protected. There are none. I do reference here the application that was filed for the proposal on 368 Pleasant Street. That was filed as a proposal for multifamily dwelling use up to three stories. So even though it was described as cohousing, it was not filed under any other ordinance. It was filed under the ordinance for dwelling multifamily up to three stories. I did mention briefly earlier, there was a public hearing. The Board of Appeal denied the requested variances, and there is an ongoing lawsuit. There is litigation currently pending. The applicant filed an appeal. But again, that's, that is a separate case. I'm noting this, that particular property, 368 Pleasant, is in the residential office zoning district. In this proposed amendment, concerns property in that district. And then finally, the effective date, the council must act on the amendments within 90 days after the hearing, within 90 days after the hearing closes, otherwise a new, duly advertised public hearing must be held. So if the hearing closes tonight, the final date for action would be May 14th, 2019. The effective date is the date of the council's vote to ordain. The standard to review, for the planning board to review and make recommendations of the zoning changes, they should be directed by substantive planning objectives, community need, and general welfare. Are there any questions, or...
Any questions for Michelle? No? Okay, Michelle, if you could proceed with your...
So this would, this is in terms of you, you'll be making an advisory recommendation to the city council for their consideration when they consider whether or not to adopt this amendment. So the planning board, excuse me, the planning recommendation, which was prepared prior to the public hearing, is that the planning board recommend disapproval of the amendments as proposed, and in the event that notwithstanding the recommendation, that recommendation, the city council considers adoption of the proposed amendments, that the following revisions be made. One, to revise proposed Section 400.1.4.14, dimensional controls as follows, under minimum open space, delete 30 percent and insert 350 square feet. Two, revise the proposed Section 800.6.2.40, the definition as follows, dwelling cohousing, so to delete the phrase, "cluster of no more than three buildings," delete 40 units as the maximum, 30, substitute 30. Add the language, "occupied by an association of residents, which association shall be established and maintained in accordance with a legally binding written agreement, a copy of which shall be submitted to the city building commissioner." Delete the phrase, "members who desire and designed to allow high levels of social interaction of residents outside individual dwelling units," so delete those phrases. And also delete the minimum of 10 percent requirement set aside for community housing as defined by Community Preservation Act. And then also, the third recommendation, to revise proposed Section 500.2.23, the parking requirements as follows, to insert a definition of shared motor vehicle and shared personal mobility device. So again, the recommendation is that the board recommends disapproval of the amendments as proposed, but that you also make a recommendation that if the council moves forward to consider adoption, these other recommendations be considered, these other revisions be considered.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Ken Antinucci.
Michelle, you, I didn't hear you, because I was reading ahead there, but Counselor Winslow, on that first line, talked about upping it from five to 10 dwelling units. Did you include that update to your notes there?
Counselor Winslow submitted his comments. I did not incorporate those in. I think that that's a reasonable change. So I'm not saying you shouldn't incorporate that in. But no, I did not, I did not include those. I didn't incorporate those. I did incorporate comments I'd received from the Building Commissioner, or tried to address comments I'd received from the Building Commissioner, which is why I deleted, recommend deletion of the cluster of more than three buildings, and added the language in about the written agreement, deleted language about high levels of social interaction, which I believe, as he noted, would be unmeasurable. So, and again, these are recommended, the recommendation is disapproval, but I also recommend that if you make these additional suggestions...
Okay, and just one other thing, is that Counselor Winslow also submitted, reducing the shared spaces combined shall comprise a minimum total of 50 percent of the entire floor area. He, I believe he recommended reducing that to 20 percent, Counselor?
Right, there was, the recommendation in, this is, this, I did include a copy of the Counselor's letter, since he was his cosponsor, so you should have a copy of that attached to that, where the proposed changes to the definition, that he had recommended, that he referenced. So interior shared spaces combined, inclusive of circulation space, exclusive of interior parking, and then changing 50 to 20, the percentage. I, again, did not incorporate any of those. The interior shared spaces, I think is reasonable, the inclusive of circulation space, but exclusive of interior parking, I think is reasonable. I'm not sure about the 20 percent. I did hear what Counsel Condon said. I did hear, and I agree with what Counsel Winslow said, 50 percent was put in as a placeholder, but I'm not sure that 20 percent is significant enough to distinguish these, this type of multifamily from a multifamily. A large, and I don't have the percentages, but I know a large percentage of the building permitted, as part of the Masonic project, there are large common areas in that. There are large common areas in the Jackson Street Project, Exchange Street, and I don't know what the percentages are. So those may be already 20, they may exceed 20, so I'm not sure what the number, without actually seeing a plan and knowing, I, I don't, I don't know that 20 percent is, is the correct number.
Okay, any other questions, Ken?
No.
Thank you. Eric, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a question for Diane, actually. From your professional experience, have you seen people looking, is there a demand for these kind of units? Or have you been read trade magazines? Is this coming up as stories, like something for the future?
The only cohousing that I was a part of was 21 Bradley Street in Medford, and that was several years back. I don't know the makeup, I think it's a 24-unit building. It was converted right outside Medford Square. I had one client that was interested in it, so I took him through. It was my first foray into it. It seemed like a really good plan. They were mostly one or two bedrooms. They weren't huge complexes. They were very small units. He even had one of those, the beds that come from the wall, Murphy bed. So he wanted the community kitchen and the community living room. So he, that's really why he wanted that particular building. And it is set up like a condominium. It was actually listed for sale, so that I could actually show it. So most of them will go on the open market. I think the first foray into it is, they do try and sell it to a select group of people that are interested in that particular living. But then when they, you know, don't, you know, they're looking for a wider pool, they need to kind of list it with somebody that can get out to the masses. I think it works, you know, and the property on Bradley Street, those do come on, but not that often. So he is the gentleman that is right. They don't come on too often, but when they do, just like any other listing, you know, it could go like that, or it could wait, you know, it depends on the market. They usually market rate condominiums, they're not, you know, they're not excessively high or they're not excessively low. It really depends on the amenities, just like any other place. If they don't have the granite and the stainless and all the, you know, bells and whistles, they're not going to sell as much as, you know, or, yeah, whatever. But anyway, I do think, you know, cohousing is probably something that will happen. It's pretty much just a condominium with a couple of shared spaces. It's almost like having a rec room, only now it's just split into different areas. So I, I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal if, because they do have bylaws. They have to have, you know, rules and regulations. It's set up just like a condo. There's somebody that's overseeing, there's condo fees, maintenance fees, I mean, there's everything, so...
Okay, anything else, Eric?
Nope, that is all.
Diane, you're all set?
Yep.
Michelle?
Yeah, I did just want to comment. I think at one point, Counsel Winslow mentioned the opinion that we had received about whether we can regulate the ownership of the property under zoning. In, in the legal opinion that we read about the development mitigation, the city solicitor did provide the opinion that there is no legal support tying zoning to form of ownership. That was with respect to a different issue, but that is the opinion that I, that was my professional opinion I gave you, I believe, previously, I've given you previously. So the zoning cannot regulate use of property based on ownership. So that's why the definition can't say must be owner occupied, or must be a condominium That's not legal under zoning. So what I wanted to say was, you know, the language that we're talking about in association with legal agreement, we're not saying what that agreement says. It might be a condo doc with bylaws, it might be, you know, student, you know, similar to what Counsel Winslow mentioned, a student cooperative association document. We're not, we're trying to put some language in there to require some legal, but we're not saying what it is. It may not be a condo association. It may be, you know, an entity that owns it, and we will not be able to regulate under the zoning whether they're rented or owned, in a nutshell, so. Just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions for Michelle? Counselors, you have any questions? No?
I have the Nelson's comment. When I was, you know, making my comments, I think a lot of them are very reasonable, and I think they're certainly something I, as a counselor, would take seriously, and we would be trying to work those in as best we could. They're good comments, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, no one else has any other questions? Does anyone want to make a motion? Patrick Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to admit that I was pretty skeptical of this when it first came about, but I have been persuaded by the information that I received tonight. I do think that it does have merit. So I see in the proposed amendment that it's limited to one zoning area. It would require a special permit, so I would make a motion to approve the amendment as amended by the recommendation in the staff report regarding the changes from the minimum open space from 30 percent to 350 square feet, and that the definition, with the amendments that were read by the city planner, that do, I believe, include the recommendations of the Building Commissioner, I would leave the five dwelling units as a minimum, and the maximum 30. I believe that the association language that was put in by the city planner is sufficient. And with regards, I guess I would leave open and recommend to the city council, look into more regarding the minimum open space percentage, based on the questions that were raised tonight, and furthermore, revising Section 500.2.2.3 to include shared personal mobility device.
Anything else, Patrick? Hold on, Ken, we were...
That's it.
Okay, Ken?
Actually, Patrick, just a question for your motion to clarify. Were you talking about the percentage of open space or shared space?
Shared space.
Shared space, okay. All right, in that case, I'd like to second Patrick's motion.
Okay, can he second it?
I was just going to second it.
Okay.
That was to recommend approval as recommended, we'll say, part, I think it was listed as Part B. it was listed as part B.
Yes.
So with those, those items listed in part B, minimum open space, the definition, the parking requirements, and, so that would leave the fifty percent for shared open space, but you, you also recommend they look into that number?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I understand that's not the recommendation of staff, so I want to make it clear that it was part B that's included in the memo.
Part B, okay, right. So recommend approval with the, the recommendations of part B?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. So this is, yes vote would be to recommend that. Ken Antonucci?
Yes.
Diane Chuha?
Yes.
Patrick Fitzgerald?
Yes.
To what, Deborah Salassi?
Yes.
Patrick Hayes?
Yes.
Eric Henry?
Yes.
Eric McCush?
Yes.
Henry Susi?
Yes.
Chuck Iovin?
Yes. Recommendation has been granted.
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Yep. So the planning board will make a recommendation to the city council ordinance committee recommending in favor of this cohousing ordinance.
Yes, I will make that recommendation in writing to the council for the planning board.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Building Commissioner Miller, thank you, appreciate your support in this and your input into the planning staff's record, preparations. Thank you very much. Let's see, everyone else? Counsel Spatafor, do you want to adjourn, you guys?
Motion to adjourn.
On Peg's motion to adjourn, Counsel Crows, seconded by Counsel Condon.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so, yep. Thank you, guys. Thanks for everything. Are these yours, Ken? Do you need these? Okay, so for the planning board, the next item on the agenda. Yep. So this was recommended and approved. Okay, where are we? So next item, update on Master Plan Steering Committee. Master Plan Steering Committee met a couple of weeks ago. The two counselors that are now on the Master Plan Steering Committee are Council President J.D. Nzika and Counselor-at-Lodge Craig Spatafor. So look forward to working with them going forward. And as we mentioned, I think the last meeting, we will be, we will be meeting less frequently because some of the activities that are, that are going on, where we've got the housing needs analysis being done by MAPC, and then there is Counsel Winslow's traffic committee, transportation committee, so there's several things that we're waiting on some feedback for before we proceed with our next steps. Pat or Michelle, anything you want to add to that?
No, thank you. We're scheduled, did you say we're scheduled to meet in April, our next meeting?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we are in the next couple of months, right?
Yeah, I thought it was April, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so the next item is Community Preservation Committee, Ken?
The committee's ready to present its recommendations to the city council. That was supposed to have happened last night, but because of the storm and everything being canceled, it's been postponed until next Tuesday. So next Tuesday, the chair will be making a presentation to the city council on the recommendations, and then we will follow up with our next meeting right after that.
Okay, thank you very much, Ken. Michelle, do you have anything on the housing needs analysis?
Well, I have, I have an update on the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee. What I'm going to hand out is a copy of the general land area minimum, also known as GLAM calculation, that was conducted as part of this contract with MAPC. So this was distributed to the Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee. What I'm also giving you, just so you know, is the letter from MAPC to the mayor that explains what this information is. I'm also giving you the cover letter from the mayor, from Maria Luisa, the mayor's office, to the committee, which gives additional background on the upcoming work of the Housing Advisory Committee, now that we have this calculation in hand. I'm also giving you a copy of your recommendation for city council paper three thirty-five of two thousand sixteen, which was the proposed inclusionary housing that you did a hearing on back in two thousand sixteen, and I'm giving you this so that, just to refresh your memory, that you had recommended disapproval of that, and that you had recommended the city council commissioned preparation of a housing needs analysis, because that's what was recommended in the master plan. So the housing needs analysis is different from the housing production plan, so just to keep those two things separate. This information I'm about to hand out has to do with the housing production plan. It's my understanding the group is still going to go forward so that we can get the information needed to do the housing needs analysis. Based on this information, though, I'm not sure of the status or fate of the housing production plan. So I will pass these out. These are your own copies to keep, since, you know, New Clerk Linda was great to bind them for you guys so that you can have them forever.
Thank you.
You may need this as a resource in the future, so. That is also available online. If you look under boards and commissions, under government, there's a section called boards and commissions and committees and, I think, groups or something, I forget the title, you'll see Housing Production Plan Advisory Committee, and under that you can see this. The email isn't there, your recommendation isn't there, but the cover letter's there, the analysis is there, and everything that's in here is, is there. Did everybody get one or my short one?
No, we should have an extra one for Charlie.
I should have two. Okay, maybe I had twelve. Okay, so that's the update on that. The committee met, and actually, all the notes from the committee meetings are there as well. We met in January. No, maybe it was the beginning of February. No, it was January. We met before this information was released. That was the last meeting. We don't have another meeting scheduled, and there are still going to be public forums scheduled as part of that process. That's it.
Okay, very good, thank you. Next scheduled meeting is March thirteenth, what's that?
Oh, I have new, something else I just want to quickly hand out.
Okay, then I'm going to go to the restroom while you do that.
Well, this is, I mean, I shouldn't say, but I, it's, it's mail that came to everybody. So your name is, no, everyone's got their own, so. It was a different, new members weren't on there. I don't know what list they were using, so can you just take it and pass it down? Thanks. They didn't have one for everybody, so new members got one, this, can you give that to Jim? Got made up. I have a copy of this. It's nothing regarding any particular case. It's, I guess, you call background information or information. It came from one of the construction unions. Nothing, it's not a lawsuit or anything. It's, I know, you're all like, what the heck is she passing out? It's from the Regional Council of Carpenters. You can take it home and do what you want with it and dispose of it or not. I'm not, you know, advocating for or, you know, supporting anything it says. I'm just giving it out because it was addressed to you to, to give out, so. So that was it. I guess we'll wait for Chuck.
We have to wait for him to go motion to Chuck.
I don't know, I'm not in charge here. Who's the vice chair? Okay, so the next regular meeting, this part is administrative, I can do, March thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, but I think you should wait to adjourn in case he has anything else.
Do we have an April meeting set?
We do have an April meeting set. The next meeting is March thirteenth, and then the next meeting after that is the second Wednesday in April. I think it's the ninth, but I'm not sure. Does anybody have a calendar?
April tenth.
April tenth.
Okay.
So I handed that out, Chuck. It's from the carpenters' union.
Thank you. You all set?
And that was it, yep.
You covered next meeting's March thirteenth?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second? All those in favor, say aye. Very good. Have a good one, everyone.